Cute little thing.
And hardworking, you know.
Yeah.
Is it the best Thai food around? No.
Yeah, but shoot, my lunch was like $6.99.
But it's close.
Yeah, reasonable.
If you, if you wanted the most interesting Thai food around, go down to Ginger Pub, which is in Columbia House Square where you can find my area is down by.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the March 12th, 2012 Washtugle City Council Workshop Meeting. Rose, could you call the order, please?
Councilmember Russell, councilmember Polinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
And councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell did let us know that he would be out of town this evening. Our first order of business is public comment for any members of the public that would like to address council. Before we get started, I know, I have a feeling we probably have a few folks here that would like to speak to the resolution we'll be discussing tonight under Agenda Bill Items B3 regarding increased rail traffic, coal trains in Washtugle. What I would ask is if you're able to be here for the meeting, any public comments for that portion, if it, there's no objection to the council, I think I'd rather tie those comments in as closely as possible to the staff report on that individual item rather than early or late. So, if you want to speak to the coal train and increased rail traffic item on our agenda, if you could hold those until we bring that item up, we will go ahead and after the staff report, go ahead and go to public comment before council gets to their discussion period on that. So, if you've got an item other than the increased rail traffic, certainly utilize the microphone, give us your name and address. Good evening, Ms. Tyrrell.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Marilyn Tyrrell, I live at 950 G Street. I'm back about the water bill. I know you're working on the revision of the water rates. I don't think that's quite the right term, but anyway. I have the greatest respect for our staff, and I certainly like Washtugle water. I'm even weird enough, as you probably would expect, that I go into Safeway and ask people, why are they actually buying water from some little town when they live in a town that has super duper water as far as I'm concerned? But, I am one person, and I have been running a water rate of about four units when apparently 10 units is allowed. I'm a watershed steward, I have four rain barrels, I use that water as much as possible to feed my birds, water my lawn, wash pots, et cetera. I don't go out and fling water around on the lawn just because it's Tuesday or some dumb thing like that. I can't imagine why staff thought that their present rate system would be acceptable because it's just not. I don't know how many, I don't know how you have a way of knowing how many homes are occupied by one person or 10 persons or whatever, but by some magic, I think you ought to feed it back. $114 for me for one, no, sorry, two months is not reasonable. And most of the water I use, of course, goes into the ground because that's the way it goes. Now, I know that you have no way of knowing who uses their water for what, but there's still got to be some way to review this system and find a more fair way to do it. And fair is the word I would lean on. I repeat, we have the best water anyway, and as long as I'm paying my fair share, I don't care what it costs, within reason, of course. But thank you for, thank you for providing us such a nice place to live. I'll put it that way.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that wishes to address council? Okay, seeing no additional at the moment, we will go to our first item, which is a presentation from our county assessor, Peter Van Norwick. Welcome.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for letting me be here.
And for those of you who have not met him before or haven't been through Property Taxes 101, this could be a wonderful thing to go through.
I will wait for the screen here to get up here. Yeah, my name is Pete Van Norwick, I am the Clark County Assessor, and I wanted to come out and talk to you guys tonight, and it's not just about property taxes, but about the Department of Assessment. You have a number of new elected county, or council members, and a lot of people aren't really, I know, don't know all the functions that we perform in the Department of Assessment. So, I wanted to come out and, you know, talk to you, the council and the new members especially, and the old to give a refresher, as exactly what we do in the assessor's office, and if you have questions about a certain thing, what you call my office for. First off, the primary function of the assessor's office is, as most everyone knows, is assess property for the purpose of taxation. I have appraisers that go out and assess the property, and we place the value on it, we send the notices out. Most people are familiar with that function that we do. We're also the department within the county that determines what the levy rates are going to be for property taxes. And I'll get into each of these a little bit more, but to start with, just kind of give a highlight of what we do. The next function we do is we administer the property tax programs. That would be current use and the senior exemptions. We are the department within the county that administers those programs for the state. And the last thing that we do is we are the department that you go to when a city wants to go ahead and do annexations. So, those are our main, primary functions that we do. The first one is assessing property for taxation. We break it into basically three parts. The first one is commercial, and this is all the stores, apartments, industrial properties, the government buildings that are out there. We have a team that goes out and looks at all the buildings. In commercial, it's about once every three years that we look at the properties. In residential, which is our next team, it's once every six years. And right now, our appraisers are out in the field, they're actually up in the North County. Next year, our appraisers will actually be in the Washtugle-Camus area. So, during revale next year, our appraisers will be in the area. And that's always a great time because what our appraisers are doing is they're going out and they're looking at properties. And they haven't looked at them for six years, and so a lot of times, people have remodeled properties, they've built outbuildings that may not have ever been picked up on the tax roll. So, when we go out and do revaluation, a lot of times, people get their assessment notice, they don't usually notice it then, it's usually when the tax bill shows up that all of a sudden they see. But that's a lot of times when you'll see increase in valuation. Because if you built an outbuilding four years ago, it may not have gotten picked up because, especially if it's an agricultural outbuilding, you don't need a permit. And so, when we go through and we do the physical revaluation, someone may have built an arena, may add a couple hundred thousand dollars to the tax roll, and when we take it on and bring it in, it shows up, and then, of course, you know, people are going to be coming to you if the property taxes jumped way up, and that's, you know, that type of stuff goes on. So, I just wanted you guys to realize that maybe next year, when we're doing it, it'll probably be the year after that where you'll probably start hearing about people that have value increases. The other thing that we do is we value the personal property for the county, and that is the business fixtures. Each of the businesses out there, they are to report to us what type of property that they have within their businesses so that we can go in and tax them accordingly. So, we do the listing and the taxing of the personal property. So, that's the main three areas that we're out assessing. I talked a little bit already about revaluation, that's where we do the physical inspections. The second thing that we do is since we only look at the county, one-sixth of it every year, the rest of the county we do is called an annual adjustment. And what the annual adjustment is, is we're going and taking a look at a neighborhood, and we're seeing how does the assessed value of homes that sold compare to their sales price? And this is where, you know, a lot of times, what will happen is, and I'll give you an example, let's say we have home, it's, two homes are worth $100,000, for example. And let's just say one's assessed at $95,000, and one's assessed at $85,000. The next year, when we come back and we do assessments, the neighborhood where the house is assessed at $85,000, even though the market hasn't changed, you say one's at 95%, one's at 85%, we need to make an adjustment up to, so that one's at 95% of the market value so that everyone's paying their fair share. And so, a lot of times, one of the biggest, most questions we're asked the most often is, how is it that when values are falling in the real estate market, our assessed value increases? And that is because from year to year, we're always adjusting those assessed values when we're not doing the revaluation to make sure that they're in line with market value. So, if we see some neighborhoods are too low, we bring them up. Neighborhoods that are too high, then we're adjusting them down, but we're always trying to bring them to market value. There's also two, some effective dates that you need to know when people are coming and they're talking to you about their assessments. The big one is assessments are, dates are effective January 1st, and new construction, if people do new construction, it's effective July 31st. If you were to go out and look at our website right now, you would see value, assessed value that's placed upon a home. And people are paying their 2012 taxes on it. I get calls every day, you know, there is no way I could sell my home for that value. And for a lot of instances, that's correct, but realizes the January 1st date when we do an assessment for the 2012 taxes, it's 2011 assessment based upon 2010 sales. So, we have to wait for all the sales to happen in 2010. Once those sales happen, which is January 1st, 2011, then we can start analyzing them. So, then it takes us months to analyze them, we then come up with a value, send it out in 2011, and then it's for the 2012 taxes. So, that's a big confusion a lot of people have, is that the sales that you need to utilize are a couple of years back. The other thing is, is that we are always working toward 100% of market value. A lot of times, I mean, I was just on the phone the other day with Oregonian, and the way they do taxes, property taxes in Oregon is different. They have a market value, they have assessed value, and they're not even, they don't even try to make them the same. They are something completely different, it's the way their system is set up. For us, we're always trying to get our property taxes to be 100% of the market value, so that's what we're always trying to work toward. And I just talked a little bit about the assessment year and the tax year, so it's just always remember, it's sales, assessment, taxes, they always lag, and that's going up or going down. When they're going up, people are like, oh, the assessor, you know, they don't, they're way undervaluing us. You know, when it comes down, then, you know, they think it's the other way. One of the other things that key is, I talked about the levy, and how the property taxes work is, you submit a budget to us that's a legal budget that you're allowed to do. We go out and we assess the properties within that taxing district. So, we take your budget, we take the total assessed value under that, we divide it, and we come up with a levy rate. What that brings is to us, it's a formula of what really happens when we're out there assessing. That means when assessed values are falling, the levy rate's going up to compensate, and exactly the opposite. When assessed values are going up, the levy rate comes down to compensate because we're going back and we are bringing in that budget. Because, you know, that's when people come to you and are wondering is, you know, property values are going down, why are my property taxes not going down also? And this is the reason why, is because we are a budget-based system, and when you decide to take the 1% increase in the budget, that goes and increases the pie in the budget, which is then divided amongst the assessed value. Every year, you have your budget. You're allowed under law to increase it 1%. So, that means if your budget this year was 100, next year it can be 101. Plus, you get to add in any new construction. And that's one of the reasons why it's very important, you know, when we work and the cities let us know what new construction is happening so we can get it on the rolls as quickly as possible, because your budget, say, on property taxes can increase this 1% plus the new construction. And that's one of the things that our offices does, is they, they take a look and make sure that, you know, the budget that you sent us is the proper budget plus the 1% new construction. That causes a lot of confusion to people, because people have heard the property taxes are only allowed to increase 1%. And it's the budget, your budget for property tax money that you're bringing in that is only limited to 1%. The property taxes for each of the taxpayers doesn't have that limit. They can raise or lower, it doesn't, regardless, depending on how their value changes, but your, it's your budget that's limited to the 1%. The other thing is, in the state constitution, property taxes are limited to 1% of the assessed value. And 1% of the assessed value equals $10 per thousand. Now, anyone out there that's gotten their tax bill, take a look at their tax bill, and they'll see, my taxes aren't $10 per thousand, they're usually $13 per thousand or 14, I think in Camus they're as high as $16 per thousand. Why is that happening? And the reason it happens is that 1% is non-voted property taxes. That includes running stuff for the state, the county government, you know, even some of the stuff within the city. The voters have to approve the excess. So, when you look at your property taxes and you see, you know, it's $14 per thousand, there has been levies that have passed, typically a school, sometimes it's libraries, that are responsible for that increase over the $10 per thousand. And so, that's important to recognize that, you know, the high property tax rates, anything over $10 per thousand, has been voted on by the people. There is also other protections within the law, and those are the levy limits. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what your fire districts have hit their levy limits?
The city has, actually.
Okay, has the city also hit the levy limits? Yeah, what happens is, you could only go up to a certain amount, and something like the fire districts are limited to $1.50 per thousand. And so, when assessed values are coming down, and they're at their levy limit, then they start bringing in less money as assessment rates fall. And that brings us into what are junior and senior taxing districts. As you hit that levy limit, some taxing districts are junior to other taxing districts. So, for example, the cemetery district is, I think about the most junior of the taxing districts. So, if we go and we hit that levy limit of the non-voter approved, you go into what's called paration, and these junior taxing districts, they just won't get their money unless they go out and they get a vote of the people to say that they can go. So, those are the protections that are built in for the taxpayers within the property tax laws. Now, there's tax programs out there if you run into people. We have senior citizens ones for exemptions and deferrals. There are requirements for that. Either you, there's disability requirements, there's also age requirements and income requirements. And so, if people meet those requirements, that they can go and have their, actually their value frozen for their property taxes. And it is the value that's frozen, it's not the amount of the taxes. And so, that's another confusion a lot of people have, is that, you know, they go and they get their value frozen. Well, as you can see, as we talked earlier, if your value's frozen, but assessed values are coming down, driving the tax rate up, that means people that have their value frozen, they're going to be seeing a lot of that increase in their property tax values, or their property tax amounts, because their value's frozen, but the tax rate's actually increasing. There's also agricultural, open space, and timber. And one of the things I, you know, want to point out is, anytime people are on these programs, we are bringing in your budget amount. So, when people come in and they join the current use, or they join the senior program, those tax dollars are actually being made up by the other people in the taxing district. So, what it is, is a tax shift, because we are bringing in the same amount. So, that's always good to remember, is each of these programs do create a tax shift for the rest of the citizens out there. Annexation, 60% required if someone wants to come in and annex in an area, and especially for you guys, market versus assessed value plays an important part. And this play, this really came into play last year when Battleground wanted to incorporate Cedars into Cedars Golf Course into the city, is, do you use market value or assessed value? Because, and the courts have said that, you know, we have to use market value. And the reason that became an issue was, is the amount, there's a large amount of land in that annexation that was owned by Clark County, which it's, of course, its value is assessed as zero. And so, then we had to take a look at, but we do put a market value on it. And if we had looked at the assessed value of Clark County being zero, they would have got the Cedars annexation, you know, without needing to do anything different. If Clark County had agreed that they wanted to be part of the annexation and signed off on it because of the market value, then they could have taken that property in. But what happened then is that, you know, the city of Battleground had to come back and redraw the annexation, they left some properties out in order, so they could get to that 60% of market value and have the signatures of the property owners on it. Last, what we don't do, we do not determine the property taxes. Property taxes, say, are determined by your budgets, what the voters have gone out and approved, and based upon the assessed value, and whether or not you have, if you've hit the levy limits or not. All we're doing is valuing the property and determining what the rate is. If you go and decide that your budget's going, you're going to increase your budget 1%, and the school district's going to go out and pass a new levy, you know, a couple of years ago in Battleground, they increased it from 13 million to 20 million, which is a 60% increase. Everyone noticed that in their property taxes immediately, and of course, by the time it shows up on the property taxes, they forgot that two years later, or two years earlier, that they'd voted for the 13 to 60. But, you know, as a 60% increase in the levy, that's going to, you know, really correspond back into people's property taxes, that portion for the school district going up to 60%. Also, our department does not foreclos on properties, that's actually a function of the treasurer's office. So, if someone comes to you and they're having an issue, and they're looking at foreclosing, it's actually the treasurer's office that's dealing with that. And that happens with someone that hasn't paid their property taxes for three years. Then we go and we start foreclosure proceedings. Another thing we don't do, a lot of people don't realize, we do not report to the county commissioners. Our customers are you, the cities, the taxing district, the county, they're one of our The only way that we, the interaction that we have with the county is that they provide our budget. Other than that, say, we're a separately elected office under the Constitution of the State of Washington, and, you know, if for some reason, we've never had an issue here, but if the county commissioner said, we don't like what you're doing in the assessor's office, we're not going to give you any budget, we have remedy to go and get budget in order to run our office. So, we don't actually report to the commissioners. We also don't go out and collect the taxes, that's also a function of the treasurer's office. And we do work really close with the treasurer's office. If any of you have been to the county building, you'll see that we have a joint lobby with the auditor's office, the treasurer's office, and the assessor's office. And we're actually in process right now, prostrating, so each of the people in the office can do the function of the other offices. And that brings us to, we also, we don't file deeds, that's also, that's a function of the auditor. Even though we deal with property, and, you know, you go onto our sites to see who owns the property, deeds are actually filed through the auditor's office. And so, this is my management staff. If you have any more in-depth questions, want to know more about property taxes, we're, you know, quite willing to sit down and talk to you about it. Most of the people in your city probably deal with Nicole Schneider the most, since she's actually the one that does the levies and the budgets and deals with the annexations. But, I want to, you know, thank you for letting me come out and tell you a little bit about our office, and just a little bit as to what we do, so when people come and talk to you about property taxes, you know who I am and how to come ask the questions.
Questions from council?
I had a couple of technical questions, actually. When you do your assessment, your appraisal, if I remember correctly, you do not actually have authority to enter the property without permission from, call it, the homeowner, correct?
No, that is actually incorrect. We actually, under state law, I do have the authority to enter any property to determine what the value is for taxation. I do have that authority in the Washington Code.
As a practical matter, most of the appraisals are done from the curb, really, correct?
For the most part. In a subdivision, yeah, you're going to mainly do from the curb. If you have 10 acres, we're going to go on your property.
You bet. But, single-family residence is a little different. And, but, if I remember correctly, and I've seen so many of these that I frankly don't remember how Clark County does it, but it seems to me that there's a formula that you use that has a whole bunch of terms and coefficients in it, one for the neighborhood, one for how many bedrooms, one for the age, all of those kinds of things. Is that roughly true?
Yeah, typically what we do is, number one, the first step is determining what the underlying value is of land underneath.
Right.
And then, each house has different types, qualities, different quality. I mean, that's really what we look at. You know, you have a fair quality house, average quality house, good, very good, excellent quality house. And that's really based upon what it costs to build them in. Marshall and Swift is the organization that goes out and provides those values. And so, what we do is we class houses based upon Marshall and Swift. We coordinate that to the market, and then, so once, so basically what Marshall and Swift does is if you take the value of the land, and then you would take what it would cost to build that house, and so then you go and you build that house. Well, that's actually for a new house. So, once, when a house is new, it's new one year, right? And then, every year after that, it's depreciating. And so, you know, it gets confusing to people to realize that, yes, your house is five years old, but it has depreciated a certain amount. It's not so hard to believe now, but when people were saying, a house used to be worth $100,000, now it's worth $200,000, why are you talking about depreciation? It's appreciated, you know, $100,000. Well, if you take the land, what it cost to new, it would be more than the $200,000, and so then, you know, we depreciated back. So, we take the land, what it cost to build, and then we take depreciation into it. So we take the land, what it cost to build, and then we take depreciation into it.
And then, when you value the land, do you value it in present use, or highest and best use?
Highest and best use. And, you know, at times, it used to be, you know, because some people would get into, especially when they have prime subdivisible land, they would see great increases. Now, pretty much, there's not a lot of subdivision going on, especially with the stormwater, there's basically no development that can go on in Clark County. So all land is just being valued as basically the base residential land. So we're not, there's not a lot going on where we're saying the highest and best use is to, you know, be a subdivision.
Thank you.
Other questions from council?
Jennifer? I've got a timing question, a scheduling question for you, Peter. I know each year as we prepare our budgets, and even if we manage to get through and get a budget set by September 1st, we'll go wild. I know we seem to continue to play a waiting game on seeing where actual assessed valuations are going to come in, and if all of that was for naught, or if we've got to go back through it, or that type of thing. Is there any way to ever get to a true cutoff date that says that on this date, the municipalities will know for their budgeting purposes, what the assessed valuation of their municipalities are, to be able to move forward, without having to wait well into the year to start doing that?
Yes, and I'm glad you asked the question. As you know, I was elected last year, and that is one of the issues that, you know, is very front and center to me, is the assessments need to get done on time. They're actually supposed to be done by May 31st. Within this county, we haven't met that date for a number of years, for a number of reasons. But, you know, when we don't meet that date, it does impact, you know, city councils, all the taxing districts are impacted. And so, one of the things that I'm doing is looking and working for efficiencies to get us back to meet that date. And last year, we mailed earlier than the year before, this year I helped to mail even earlier, and I hope, you know, by either next year or the year after that, to be back to meet the statutory date. Because to be honest with you, it hasn't been a priority of that office to meet that statutory date, when it is important, because it does impact all of the taxing districts down the line. So my commitment is you, is we are working to make sure that we meet that statutory date, so that you guys can go and work on your budgets, and know that you're dealing with numbers, not having to worry about what the assessed value is, and are we going to hit our levy limit and have way less than we did. So we are working toward that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any last questions, comments? Peter, thank you very much for being here.
All right, well, thank you for having me out.
We appreciate you taking your time. Okay, going into agenda bill discussions, community development. Mitch, you've got a few items for us. Setting a public hearing for renewal of critical areas memorandum agreement with Clark Public Utilities.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. The first item on the, for next week, is to set a public hearing. This is a request from Clark Public Utilities to renew their memorandum of agreement with the city in regards to critical areas. The agreement allows Clark Public Utilities to repair, maintain, and upgrade their infrastructure without obtaining individual critical area permits for each individual task, and when they do that. It does require Clark Public Utilities to utilize best management practices when they do work within critical areas, as well as provide mitigation when necessary. The original memorandum of agreement was approved on May 15th, 2006, and it's set to expire this May 15th, 2012. The timeframe for the requested agreement is again, six years, so that would put it out until 2018. The recommended action to you is to set a public hearing on Clark Public Utilities and the City of Washtugle Critical Areas Memorandum of Agreement for April 2nd, 2012, at 6:00 PM through approval of the consent agenda. And I hope to have the updated agreement for you to go out in your packets next week, but that may not happen, so you will probably most likely not get that upgraded, updated agreement until the 26th, the work session on this item. So again, this is just a agenda bill to approve, to set the public hearing for April 2nd.
Questions from council?
Okay, we've got a public hearing scheduled for next Monday, 6:00 PM, for Liberty Land and Development, request for easement.
Yes, again, a hearing, this is a request by Liberty Land and Development, they are requesting the city grant an easement across open space for ingress, egress, and utilities, across a tract that was previously dedicated to the city of Washtugle, with the Riverview Terrace Phase One development. State statute gives the city council the ability to grant that easement provisionally, it does, you can't, it can't impair public access, or create any kind of physical barriers. If you recall from our February 21st meeting, this item was before previous council in 2007, and the motion to approve that easement failed due to the lack of a second. The, just a little perspective, there we go, the property here, we get Crown Road, West S Circle, easement would come right off of here, and zoom in a little bit there, twenty feet in width, approximately ninety feet in length, to provide access to this lot back here, which is in the city of Camas. The recommended action is to hold a public hearing, and the recommended action is the same as it was in 2007, is to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an easement and granting to Liberty Land and Development, a non-exclusive easement for ingress, egress, and utilities across the described property, under conditions that Liberty Land and Development pay their fair market value of the easement to the city in the sum of $2,000, that the easement be limited for the purposes of providing access and utilities to one single-family lot, and that the easement comply with the conditions outlined in RCW 5817-225, namely, no physical barriers may be erected on the property. Again, we'll just set for hearing next week.
Questions from council? Jennifer?
Yes, I have a question about their mailing address, would that be a Camas address, or would that be a Washtugle address?
I'm not sure, but I will find out for our hearing, and make that part of my presentation. I would assume it would probably come through Washtugle, the axis off of Washtugle Road, so I'm assuming a Washtugle Road address, but I will find out.
And city services also?
Yeah, that's the easement request, is the city services would come from us.
From us, okay.
Yes, I do actually have...
The lot is still physically in Camas?
In Camas, correct.
And there's no, no talk of annexing a lot, or anything like that?
We haven't had a real serious discussion about annexing this property. It would create an interesting boundary up there, but it's nothing that we've had, like I said, any serious discussion about doing.
Are we in discussions with Camas as far as the pros and cons, or any sort of benefit for them? I mean, it would be a lot that would be developed, and then hence, you know, be worth more at that point?
Yeah, it's not uncommon, and actually, in the same development, just a little further east, there are other easements that are run through Riverview Terrace to the south, into properties within Camas, that are just to the south of our city limit. So it's not uncommon, or utilities can't be provided. I do have an email into Eric Levison with the city of Camas, their public works director, asking, you know, that it can't be served, if it can't be served by utilities from Camas. If it can be served, then Camas would say, "Well, no, we will serve the property." But, again, from '07, it's my recollection that that wasn't the case.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just curious about the timeline. Starts out in the summary, that the Riverview Terrace subdivision developer dedicated a tract of land. There's no date on that, I'm just curious how far back that started.
Well, if you recall from our work session on the 21st, I kind of had a somewhat lengthy background of it, but the subdivision was actually dedicated, they dedicated that tract, was recorded in 2004.
Okay.
And then they approached us in '06 for that easement, and the hearing was held in '07.
Just to be clear, we're talking about different developers?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
For the Riverview Terrace versus this property?
Absolutely.
Other questions?
Well, due to lack of experience of sitting through this type of meeting, will they, will the different parties be representing, they both planning to show, do you know that in advance?
I'm sure there will be individuals from Riverview Terrace, I'm sure that there will be representation for Liberty Land and Development at the hearing.
Good, okay, thank you.
Okay, so it's set to come back to us next Monday. Also on Monday, we've got scheduled at 6:00 PM as well, a development agreement with Hamilton Property Development. Mitch?
Yes, Your Honor, I have put these two, for all intent purposes, together for this presentation. There are two agenda bills. The first in your agenda packet, VA 3, is a request by Killian Pacific, known as, for the property known as the Hamilton property. The VA 4 in your packet is a request by Port of Camas Washtugle for developer agreement, known as the Sixth Street property. And again, I put these together for this presentation, because for all intent and purposes, they are the same agreement. There will be two separate presentations at the hearing, there will be two separate hearings, individual hearings on these items next week, though. But again, for all intent purposes, they are the same agreement. And these agreements would vest the subject properties to the development standards in place as of the date of the agreement. So those standards that we have today would be in place for the life of the development agreement, if it's approved by council. These are simple developer agreements, if you will. There will be other development agreements. When the applicants have a, an idea of tenants, when they have a more project-related development, they will be back. And it's at that time that the cities will be looking at it more closely, for looking at the things, among other things, access along the water, access to the water in those. So there will be, these are straightforward, just to vest the standards in place today to allow the applicants to go out and market those, these properties with some consistency, and they will be back, either to modify these agreements, or with new agreements in the future. Give an idea of the properties, we're familiar, most familiar with the Hamilton property, former lumber mill, right along the water. We recently changed the zoning of this property from heavy industrial to highway commercial. Just to the east is the Sixth Street properties, these are port-owned, or the ports in discussions with, there may be some modification to this property, as some, depending on the agreements that the port has with property owners, that some of these parcels may fall out of that. The, if you look at the both properties together, it's a pretty sizable piece of property, approximately forty acres there, right along the waterfront, very encouraging to see redevelopment of this property, and help the city along as well. Tonight, Adam Tyler with Killian Pacific is here, as well as Steve Hornstein with the Hornstein Law Group, representing the Killians, and David Rip, port director as well, if you had any questions of them. But these, the recommended action for next week will be to hold a public hearing for these items. Council desires to make motion to read the ordinances by title only, approving the development agreement, and to pass, post, and publish in the usual manner. You'll notice that this is a different recommendation that was in your agenda bill. State law requires that the development agreements be approved either by ordinance or resolution, so you will have an ordinance in your agenda packet for next week. That's it, hearings next week.
Questions from council on either one of the items?
Yep. On the port development agreement, I noticed that some of the properties were still privately owned, and you said that they're in negotiations, and maybe Dave can kind of give an update on how that's going. This is, if they fall off the rolls, or the list, the parcel list that you have here in the agreement, then what happens? I mean, does that, I mean, do we have to come back and...
We're hoping that we'll have that information before, Dave probably can speak to that better.
Right now, we have...
Dave, before you start that, Dave Scott, you know, obviously, this isn't the public hearing, and as detailed information starts to come out, that won't be part of that record of that public hearing, is this somewhere we want to go tonight? Or should those type of questions be held for next Monday?
It might be more appropriate to wait until the public hearing. Although, we're talking about just the general scope of the development agreement, and the applicability to which property, so that the council has a feel for what ground is covered by it. It will be all or part of that, I think would be a good answer to say.
Well, my concern is that we're limiting the, you know, the potential development, you know, to current standards, so we're just kind of, you know, however it's zoned, that's kind of how we're going with it at this point, and I just, I'm just curious about the individual homeowners.
We'll make sure that we address that adequately in our staff report next week, if that is indeed an issue. We'll, you know, we'll make sure that we take care of it.
I'm sure Steve and Dave, you're both going to be prepared to answer any questions as part of the hearing and presentation along the way.
I'll work that information on the bench, I just emailed myself tomorrow morning, so. Mitch and I have been talking.
I don't want to necessarily limit the questions of council, but I want to make sure, as we step through this, that we don't end up in a situation where we've got to do a do-over, in regards to the public hearings, and getting those rescheduled, if we've got an ordered amount of information that comes out, that whoever's here for the public hearing next week, or council member Russell, who may be here next week, but if you're talking about things tonight, he doesn't review it, he isn't available to vote on things. So I want to make sure that we're not getting into an area that we're going to get our feet stuck. Other, just general questions in regards to the development agreements and their scheduling on to the agenda for next week? Okay? Mitch, thank you.
Thank you.
We've got a couple, three items under administration. The first one is authorizing the mayor to sign a revised interlocal agreement for the trial consolidation of fire departments with Camas, to include the consolidation of command and staff personnel. David, are you taking these ones?
Yes, I will, thank you, Mayor. Council, next week before you will be revision to the current interlocal agreement that we have with the city of Camas. As you'll recall, a couple of meetings ago, you approved an update to our interlocal agreement for the provision of emergency medical services and our trial consolidation. That agreement is good through the end of 2013. The revision to the agreement is very simple in the scoping language of that document, whereas we are currently consolidated to the level of captain at our fire departments, and are maintaining two separate command structures and two separate staff structures in that regard. The purpose of the interlocal agreement will accommodate, as revised or as proposed here, all the way through to the command level, and all of the staff resources, all the way up to chief. So it... So it will allow us to fully consolidate all of our staff resources. So a very straightforward interlocal agreement. CAMUS is considering this at their meeting next week in workshop, and they don't meet, again, until the second, and so we won't be having this in front of you. I said next week, and my apologies. It's actually on April 2nd that this will be in front of you for action. So on the 26th, we'll just be a little reminder, it'll be on the agenda again. But we wanted to address this to you first, and then have the CAMUS council be considering it next week. That's why we're a couple of weeks in advance, just because of the timing of our meetings. The next item is directly related to that. If we are going to, through our interlocal agreement, fully consolidate our departments on a trial basis at the command and staff level, then we need to make that change in terms of the actual personnel. So the direction that we're heading for the period of the trial consolidation is that Chief Swinhardt from the City of CAMUS will assume duties pursuant to your confirmation of the mayoral appointment as the chief for the consolidated departments during the trial period. And Chief Schumacher will be chief of the Fire Prevention Division, which will be a new division for both communities, and in that, he will have the role of division chief there, as well as the fire marshal for both communities. As you know, right now, he is the chief and fire marshal for our department, so he would resume, assume those responsibilities in the City of CAMUS. This particular deployment is something that has kind of been on the table for quite some time, actually, to the very beginnings of our trial consolidation discussions. There was an org chart that we were looking at, what are some of the benefits to our community of this trial consolidation? And one of those was that, for the same cost, if you would, we would have expanded staff capability within our community by a deployment such as this. And so we will have an enhancement to our fire prevention program, both here in Waschugle and in CAMUS, by consolidating those two offices and under Ron's leadership and his expertise as a fire marshal. There's a formality involved with this because our code, as many codes do, requires that the mayor appoint the Waschugle chief and that the council confirm that. Normally, that's handled somewhat verbally during a meeting. In this case, we have a memorandum of appointment because it's sort of a unique type of appointment that we're doing, and so the requested action on the 2nd will be for you to basically approve the mayoral memorandum of appointment. And what's unique about it is that it's sort of appointing two chiefs, if you would. In one sense, it's holding Chief Schumacher's appointment in abeyance, so that Nick can assume that responsibility if confirmed for the period of the trial consolidation. But at the moment, that we are not in a trial consolidation, whether that's at the conclusion of the interlocal agreement or for some other reason because we terminate it before that, it maintains Chief Schumacher's status in that regard, and instantly would come out of abeyance, and he would be the chief. There's lots and lots of operational details around all of this that are administrative in nature that we continue to work on. I think something that would be very important for me to say on behalf of the mayor and I, that this particular deployment to us is a very positive step in terms of examining the effectiveness of the consolidation. And we're thankful to Chief Schumacher and to Chief Swinhardt for the cooperative relationship that they have and for the positive nature in which they're moving forward on this. I think it's very important to mention as well that it was the mayor and I who approached the mayor of CAMUS and the city administrator in CAMUS to begin the conversation of taking this next step, so that we can fully evaluate the effectiveness of the consolidation under one command structure as opposed to two command structures. So we were the initiators of this a while back, culminating with these proposals for the council. I don't know if you have any other specific questions moving forward, but you'd be happy to answer them for me.
Dave?
How does this affect the status of our volunteers?
This will have no impact at all on the status of our volunteers. The interlocal agreement continues to point to the volunteers having a prominent role. And in fact, one of the administrative details is that Ron is going to have the role of working with our volunteers, and he'll be the chief command officer working with the Waschugle volunteers.
Thank you. Paul?
The one thing that kind of leaped out at me is, under termination, the existing interlocal agreement basically allows termination at will with some notice requirements, but this termination agreement gives that up and says only in the event of a breach. And I'm curious about that.
That termination language is the existing language. We're not making a change there. So this is what's in the existing agreement.
Okay. It's not what I remember, but my memory is not perfect, so.
Other questions from council? Can I show?
Public Safety Committee meets with the fire chief and the police chief of Waschugle. So will we continue to meet with Chief Schumacher, or how will that?
Sort of the way we're looking at this, in terms of those administrative details, is that Chief Schumacher is going to continue to be part of the leadership team here for the mayor and with me, and will be the liaison from the consolidated departments to that. And so that will be the same, and be that liaison from the trialy consolidated departments to the city council, which would include its committees. However, I think it's important that during this trial, that Chief Swinhardt will engage with our administrative leadership team from time to time and as appropriate, and similarly with the council and the committee, I think as appropriate from time to time. It'll be a work in progress, but I think the highly cooperative arrangement that we have is what points to its success.
Thank you.
But Ron will continue to be in his office and will be available to any of you at any time and be as responsive as he always is.
General?
I have a question about employment. Would Chief Swinhardt then become an employee of the City of Waschugle?
No.
No.
No, there'll be no change in employment status for either chief. This is affected through an interlocal agreement as part of the trial consolidation. So just like some of our line personnel that are currently staffed in CAMUS stations for their shift, they are Waschugle employees, they are under our bargaining agreement, they are under our overall employment status administration, if you would. But in terms of the day-to-day deployment in the fire service, they are part of this trialy consolidated operation. And that's been existing for quite some time through this trial already. This extends that same approach into the command staff. For an example, the deputy fire marshal in CAMUS will provide services here in Waschugle now, but will be a CAMUS employee. If we ever enter into a permanent consolidation, that would be an issue that would be likely to change in some way, depending upon the details of that. But since we are in a trial consolidation, we just need to maintain those types of things as separate, and we just, we consolidate through the interlocal agreement piece.
Okay. So Chief Schumacher would continue to handle scheduling and hiring, firing, that sort of thing?
No, not necessarily. During this trial consolidation, depending upon, you know, the assignment of duties that the command team, which would consist of Chief Swinhardt and then Chief Schumacher, and Chief Freecliff is the chief of the EMS division, that trio is the command team for the trialy consolidated department. Currently, the battalion, right, as we speak, the battalion chiefs are handling scheduling, right? And so that, I'm assuming, is going to continue. Any wholesale changes around sort of how we deploy or things like that, the administrative relationship that we have is that Chief Swinhardt wouldn't make any unilateral changes that would affect the City of Waschugle without that coming through, working with Chief Schumacher and myself and the mayor. And we've talked at length about those types of things, very clear understanding of that this is a unique situation, it's a trial consolidation, and we're going to do everything we can to give it a fair shake, if you would, and that includes unifying command. But at the same time, we recognize that it is a trial consolidation. Chief Schumacher continues to be here in the event that the trial discontinues, he's our chief, and we would resume exactly the way we were before the trial.
Other questions from council? I think it's important, both on our behalf and CAMUS's behalf as well, you know, where, I think as we approach this action in consolidating functionally the departments in regards to the organizational chart, really, we're getting to that point, that critical point, when we truly start to develop the rest of the questions and the answers of if this consolidation, RFA, whatever it may be at the end, if anything, is truly going to make sense for both communities. At this point, we've been holding hands, we've gone out on a few dates, now we're talking about potentially getting engaged and see where that goes to. So I certainly commend both of the chiefs and Chief Schumacher, who now is not holding Chief Swinhardt's hand. You know, these are difficult things to go through in regards to, you know, we have been two completely different departments, and we're asking you next Monday to take a step, or in a couple of weeks, and the CAMUS council as well. We're talking about making a major, major change in one of the most important departments in this entire city. We don't do it lightly, and we want to make sure that as we've gone through this, we've done it in a thought-out process, we know where we are at all given points, we can still take little steps back and make sure that we're still in good shape. And that is really, if we're going to take this thing out for a test drive, this is, I firmly believe this is where we need to go now. You know, we've talked about, everybody's getting along well in the firehouses, and we've got people arriving when calls are made, we've got different guys in different uniforms and different trucks showing up together, and all of that's going well. But now we need to make sure, if we're going to implement that entire organizational chart, I'd rather do it now than 16, 18, 19 months down the road, and find out if we've got any hitches along the way. This gives us the ability to do that, to make adjustments as we need to. As Dave said, it keeps the three chiefs involved in making sure that all three of those important pieces of the puzzle are all working at the same time. Steps forward beyond this, we certainly have the RFA committee that will be looking at a number of different questions and different scenarios of how this thing may work. We'll also have, at the same time that the chiefs are operationally looking at it, making sure it works, we'll be making sure that our human resource directors from both cities are also engaged in starting to figure out, okay, we're still going along on these dates, we've still got a couple of different contracts, and how do those start to mesh together? What truly are the financial aspects of, if we totally integrate this department, what does that mean? So there's still a lot of work to be done, but this, I think, really gets us to that critical point of, it's, to a large degree, it's a go-no-go at this point. So would certainly ask for your consideration and your passage of both of these items for next week to allow us to continue what we've brought forward up to this point and see if we can break the mold of departments that haven't been able to do this successfully and financially successfully as well. Any final questions from council? Chiefs, thank you both for being here this evening. Okay, that brings us to a resolution regarding increased rail traffic in Waschugle. David?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, in your packets is a draft resolution on this issue of the potential for increased rail traffic through our community. As you know, we've had some discussion about this at some previous meetings, and there's been some citizen communication to you about concerns in this regard. I did some research and crafted this proposed resolution based upon that research and also looking at some of the language in a resolution that the City of CAMUS passed very recently. Like to bring you up to speed just very briefly on sort of the status of a couple of projects that are the cause for this concern, and sort of procedurally where they're at. That's summarized in the summary statement, but as you know, there are two proposed rail terminal projects, if that's the right lingo for that. One is up in Watcomb County. It's called the Gateway Pacific Terminal Project, or GPT. The other project is in Cowlets County, and it is the Millennium Project. There's an existing rail terminal there, actually, and there's an expansion, an addition, I guess it's an addition of an additional one, that's being proposed there. Both of these projects are primarily targeting coal as the freight, and they will be terminals for export out over the Pacific. That coal coming from inland and on cars through our community. And although that is the target commodity that's been identified, in my conversations with staff at both of those counties, particularly in Cowlets County, it's not necessarily the only commodity that would avail itself of the terminal. Nonetheless, whatever the commodity would be, these are significant terminal projects, and so there is the potential indeed for a significant increase in rail traffic in our community. So that raises a number of concerns that we've heard about around traffic congestion, delays, health and safety concerns for a variety of reasons. And one of the dilemmas on this type of a situation is that the counties wherein these projects lie are the permitting counties. They issue permits for these terminal projects, and as we do when we issue permits, we kind of take a look at what's going on right in our little neighborhood, and we evaluate against our codes. These projects are significant enough in scope that their impacts under the State Environmental Policy Act, the SEPA, as well as the NEPA, which is the National Environmental Policy Act, such that there's a determination of significance, and they're working on environmental impact statements, which is a significant undertaking. We are asking through this resolution if it would be passed that the scoping for those EIS documents be made in such a way that impacts along the rail line from the source of the commodity to the terminal be included in the evaluation, and that not just the impacts of the actual terminal be included in the evaluation. There are multiple agencies involved at the local, the county levels there, the State Department of Ecology is involved, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as, I'm sure, many interested parties. The projects are not exactly at the same spot, but it would be prudent for us to become parties of record, which is a formal term that keeps us on the list, basically, gets us information, gives us standing. And I think it's important for the community that we have that. It's unclear as to whether or not this scoping can be done in this way. In my conversations with colleagues in both counties, it's something that they have considered, they're kicking the tires on that still, don't have a lot of details on that. This advocacy from us would not be unexpected because of my conversations. There are other communities that have, obviously CAMUS, but there are other communities that have similar concerns and are expressing similar advocacy. But again, it's an unanswered question as to whether or not the scoping can be so broad. Certainly, we would hope it could be. Even if the scoping can be that broad, typically what happens in an EIS or any SEPA analysis is you identify impacts and then you identify mitigation. That's a significant scope, if you would think about it. Rail traffic from inland all the way to our coast, I don't know how many miles it is, but it's a long way. What would the mitigations be, and would they work? So those are all the types of questions that the agencies are going to have to deal with. Nonetheless, this resolution, if approved, would assert that we would like that scope to include us here and really the whole rail line. It also goes on, and this was something that was in the CAMUS resolution, and I thought it was an interesting assertion. it was an interesting assertion, and that is, when you're deciding what the scope is and you have hearings that help you decide what the scope is going to be of your EIS, maybe it would be good to go to some areas along the way of the rail line and hear from folks about what the scope should be. And so, we ask that they do that. Also, once the project is scoped, there are other hearings, I believe, that would take place in terms of the actual adjudication of the EIS. And if there are any such hearings and we are scoped to be part of it, it would be nice that some of those hearings, at least one of them, would be down here as well. Again, I don't know the efficacy of any of that, but it's something that we're asking for. So, with all of that, we have the resolution. It makes, you know, has the where asked statements about the uncertainty of the impacts and our concern about that and that we really would like to know what the impacts are going to be and what could be done about it. And it asks that we be a party of record to that. It doesn't assert any specific or precise impacts because really, it's unknown to us. We have heard some things, but that's why we're asking to be scoped, is so that we can understand exactly what it is and then what, if anything, should be done about it. I think that probably covers it, Mayor and Council. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
I think David's synopsis of this indicates, again, one of the reasons that we were fortunate enough to bring him to the city and bring him on board in order to go through things that are complex like this and separate all the different pieces and really get down to what impacts and what concerns the city itself. For the benefit of the members of the public, I want to make sure, and I'm going to take a moment and go through and read the draft resolution that we have here. It is certainly different than Camus' and really gets down to what we felt was appropriate from our city's standpoint. So, resolution of the City Council of the City of Washougal, Washington, expressing concern regarding the impact of increased rail traffic in Washougal resulting from proposed rail terminal projects in Watcomb County and Cowlets County and requesting that the principal agencies reviewing the environmental impact statements for the said projects, including Watcomb County, Cowlets County, Washington Department of Ecology and the United States Army Corps of Engineers, include impacts along the train route for freight moving to the proposed terminals in the scoping document for the EIS and that at least one of the EIS scoping hearings and one of any other subsequent hearings related to the EIS for the project be held in Clark County. Whereas the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Track runs through and bisects both communities of Washougal and Camus running east and west, and whereas Washougal has five at-grade crossings and only one grade-separated crossing, and whereas there are proposed rail terminal projects in Watcomb County and Cowlets County, and whereas the proposed projects will significantly increase freight traffic on the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Track, and whereas the increased freight traffic is intended to be coal being delivered to the new terminals but may potentially include a variety of commodities, and whereas this increased rail traffic will have impacts in Washougal and Camus, including but not limited to increased traffic congestion and delays to residents and commerce and increased tailpipe emissions from stopped and idling vehicles. And whereas Washougal has been made aware of potential impacts from coal dust and other particulates that may be blown from open rail cars but has no way to evaluate such potential impacts, and whereas Watcomb County, Washington Department of Ecology and the United States Corps of Engineers have entered into an MOU to jointly promulgate?
Promulgate.
Promulgate the required EIS and are currently scoping the EIS for the, basically, Watcomb Project. And whereas Cowlets County is evaluating an application and developing an EIS for the Millennium Project, and Washougal Department of Ecology and the United States Corps of Engineers are also involved, and whereas said agencies should include the impacts of this increased rail traffic in the scope of the EIS for each project and public hearings at the various stages of the EIS process should be conducted in Clark County. And whereas the City of Washougal wishes to become a party of record regarding both projects, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Washougal as follows. Section one, we urge Watcomb County, Cowlets County, State Department of Ecology and the United States Army Corps of Engineers to include impacts to Washougal, including but not limited to increased traffic congestion and delays to residents and commerce, increased tailpipe emissions from stopped and idling vehicles and potential impacts from coal dust and other particulates that may be blown from open rail cars in the scoping of the EIS for both the GPT project and the Millennium Project. We urge Watcomb County, Cowlets County, State Department of Ecology and the United States Army Corps of Engineers to conduct at least one EIS scoping hearing for each project and at least one of any subsequent hearings related to the EIS for both projects at a location in Clark County. And we request that the City of Washougal be made a party of record for both the GPT and the Millennium Projects. So, that's basically what we have forwarded from a staff position to the council for their consideration. Before we go to council discussion and council questions, I'd like to go ahead and open the floor up and the microphone up for members of the public who are here, one side or the other, on the issue, to give us your comments. I do ask, not knowing how many people are going to get up, I do ask that you do keep your comments limited to three minutes. We do have a timer here that will flash yellow when you're inside of a minute, red when you're done. And I'll probably somewhat rigidly try and get through that so that we make it through everybody that wishes to speak. When you come up, if you would, use the microphone. Please give us your name and address, whether you live in the city or not. We do need your address for the records. And from there, you've got a three-minute period. Please address your comments, my direction, not to individual council members. Who would like to go first? Come on forward.
Thank you. Keith Brown, I live 211 Malfake Tracks, Washougal. I think it's important, you know, there's no question that should this project go forward, it will have an impact. The issue is how large an impact and in what fashion. And I think it's imperative that in assessing that impact, that the members of the communities who are going to be affected have an opportunity to comment. And that's really what this resolution does, is brings forward the opportunity for members of the public to comment. I know that people will speak on the health effects and the impact on congestion. I have been, I'm not currently, but I was the Fire Commissioner over at Scamane County Fire District Four and was a firefighter and have been out on fires caused by rail trains going through the gorge below Cape Horn. And one of my concerns is that the increased rail traffic has the real potential of increasing fire damage. We've been very fortunate in those fires that the east winds were not blowing at the time that those fires came through. Otherwise, it would have moved up the Cape Horn area into residential areas and devastated that. So, that I would urge council members to pass the resolution so that all of these issues that will affect our community can be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good evening.
Good evening. Teresa Robbins. I'm his, I don't know if I want to say it, the better half, but I'm, he's probably my better half.
Please say so.
Yes. Teresa Robbins, 211 Malfake Tracks Road. I think it's not only wise, but paramount that you make sure that Washougal has a voice in this process. I'm deeply concerned about the potential pollution and the impact. I just want to relay one quick story because we're going to have, I'm sure, because I'm sure you're a wise council, we're going to have a voice in this down the road where we'll be able to say a lot about it and I will have prepared remarks for that. I have a friend who has moved here from Pennsylvania many years ago, many years ago, and she, when I was sharing the potentiality of the coal trains coming through here at that volume, she, I can only describe her as ashen. She says, "We moved away from Pennsylvania to get away from the coal trains." She said, "I could never, the soot was everywhere. It was in our food, it was in the house, we couldn't get rid of it. It was just filthy. The pollution was immense." And she was terribly distressed that we were going to be looking at the same thing in the pristine gorge, as pristine as it can be at this point at any rate. I think it could be severely damaging to any of the communities along the gorge and especially the City of Washougal, the gateway to the gorge. And you've been doing such a fine job in promoting Washougal into preparing it for what I think is going to be the tourism industry for this incredible place in which we live. I would, I just want to strongly encourage you to make sure that this resolution goes through and we maintain a voice in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robbins.
I'm Dan Huntington of 72 Patrick Lane, Washougal. My wife and I sell real estate in the area. And when we sell real estate, we're selling essentially a vision of a lifestyle that people come to this beautiful area for. And that vision would be totally shattered by increased trains coming through the area. People don't want to be moving to something that resembles Appalachia. They have other things in mind. I think, Mr. Mayor, your staff has done an excellent job in putting together a resolution and I urge all the council members here to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huntington.
I'm Linda Beatty, 1227 B Street. I have lived in 15 states in the United States and my husband's family came, escaped Pennsylvania with many diseases. The coal health considerations are my largest consideration and many of the people that I know that couldn't be here tonight because they're afraid of the weather. But speaking from the mothers and the grandmothers, seriously, this is our health and it isn't hard to figure out, this is not a good choice. Thanks for hopefully thinking the same.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty.
Hi, my name is Eleanor Warren. I live at 37138 Southeast Gibson Road. I just wanted to come down and say how important this whole resolution is to everybody who lives in this community, everybody who cares about the Columbia River Gorge. I'm a mother-to-be and the thought of my child growing up in a community with potentially approximately, they were saying, 84,000 tons of coal dust coming down through the gorge annually is terrifying. So, please, give us voice.
Good evening. Larry Keister, 4402 Southeast Nitzelberger Road, Washougal. I think that the proposal that was presented by staff is excellent. It gives us an opportunity to be involved with the potential risks that will definitely affect our city. We spent so much time working on economic development and growth in our community and keeping our community the pristine area that it is and gateway to the gorge. Let's continue in that direction. All we're asking for is a seat at the table to be included in what is going on. And I urge you to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Mayor. My name is John Jansen, 1227 B Street, Washougal. I live about a block and a half from the railroad. And yeah, the coal dust is very, very much in my mind. That and the fact that the trains themselves come right along the Columbia for I'm not sure how many miles, someone else had mentioned that earlier. And if it's blowing coal dust out, it's got to impact the Columbia. And as an avid fisherman, I'm very, very much concerned about the mercury level. Thank you. And yes, I do heartily approve of this passage.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jansen.
Richard Hamby, 37015 Southeast Gibson Road. I want to thank you, David, for putting that resolution together. You identified a number of concerns that some of them are easy to imagine that they're very legitimate concerns, just the increased traffic with the crossing arms down at the grade crossings is pretty undeniable as an impact. Some of them are a little more unknown, as you pointed out. Mayor Guard, you said we were hoping or offering opportunity for comments for either side and having a hard time imagining the other side. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Hi there. I'm Sam Lockhart. I live at 1415 Southwest Alder Street in Portland. So, I don't live in Washougal and you've also heard a ton from me already, so I'm not going to talk at all. Karen Grimstad, who's a citizen in Washougal, wasn't able to appear due to an injury and it's leaving her slightly immobile. So, I promise that I would read at least a section of her comments and I can leave them with you as well. So, "We will suffer traffic congestion alone from an additional 20-plus 1.5-mile-long trains causing transportation delays in rail communities, cutting off river access, hurting local businesses, inconveniencing commuters, and delaying response times for emergency vehicles. This would also deter developers from wanting to invest in the community, tourists from wanting to frequent the downtown area, and families from wanting to move in. Noise from the rumbling of these trains would lower quality of life. I own two investment properties on East Street in Washougal, Washington, which is starting commercial. I planned on developing those two properties into office leasing space and bringing the door front to the sidewalk. Those front doors will be only about 300 to 350 feet and the dirty coal dust spilling off each railroad car. No, I will sell, buy, invest somewhere else." That was in bold and underlined, which is why it says it. "In Washougal alone, we have five at-grade railroad crossings, which is a huge problem for our community. It will shut our traffic, slow down, and our business will suffer. Train traffic at this volume increases the likelihood of deluged derailment, particularly when you are transporting coal. We've designed this community to be a historic blocking community. This pollution will kill our tourist industry. Want to take a hike breathing coal dust into your lungs as you have a nature hike along the Columbia River Dyke? I believe in Washougal City Council and I know that when presented with the facts, they will rise to the occasion and pass the resolution supporting the City of Camus, Spokane, and Washougal, which represents the concerns of Washington communities. We need your help, all of our voices together, protect our community from the dirty coal and that's all, best." And I can, yeah, leave it at that. And then I also wanted to, you just, I only have one copy of this, but this is a Southwest Washington business letter that business owners in Washougal have signed on to. And I have a list of all that, just specifically the Washougal businesses that have signed on to this letter opposing the coal trains for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Any other members of the public that would wish to address?
I'm Marilyn Tyrrell, 950 G Street in Washougal. I see this from a point of view of who's ox is getting bored here. The money that is being made comes from people who are digging coal in Montana, I don't know where they, east, and the people, excuse me, further on the coast who are selling coal. In the meantime, Washougal is putting, is suffering from the negative effects of the coal dust. This is a very dusty place for me to live and if I added coal dust to that, I would be very concerned. If the people who are east in, quote, Montana or wherever, I think they should be, first of all, required to cover the containers or spray on some sort of containing loom, dust, whatever, that would keep the dust down. I am also concerned about the quality of the coal that's being transported. We've already been told that everything that happens in the Pacific comes back to the West Coast as we are now seeing the pollution from various things. The water is full of the garbage from the difficulties in Japan a year ago. We are in the middle of all this and sort of, my question is, what's in it for Washougal? And apparently, there's nothing in it for Washougal. So, asking at least for cover for this is not too much. And thank you for the resolution. I think it's well spoken. And I hope it gets to the people who are supposed to be listening.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Hi. I'm Karen Jones and I live in Vancouver, 8802 Northeast 61st Street, 16th Street. But my daughter lives two blocks from the railroad tracks. She's on 3802 Northeast. She's on 3802 Northeast, 3802, sorry, 3802 C Street. And already, you know, nobody's mentioned the noise, and we do hear the, you know, she does hear the trains, and I can't imagine what more. They're very loud right where there is, and the health impacts. She has a new baby, and since she moved down there, she's felt more irritation living there and imagining all the coal dust and everything that could possibly affect her. Also, I want to speak on behalf of the wildlife, too, that we have to consider. That's going to be when those trains go through the gorge, and I've heard there's going to be 27 to 28 every day. So, thank you very much, David, for the resolution and for you folks considering it. I think it's just of utmost importance, as the speaker before said. Washougal's benefits from this are very small, but the cost potentially is very great. So, thank you very much for listening and for doing this.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Karen, good evening.
Hi. Karen Burnham, 4255 Amloop in Washougal. Retired school teacher, and I just want you to keep in mind how close high school cause and in particular Hathaway is to the railroad tracks, and just keep the vision in mind of a playground full of children climbing monkey bars and swinging with train after train going by. It just is unsettling, so keep the school kids in mind.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, Joe.
Hey, I'm Dan. My name is Joel Aback, 2682 Northwest Albergue, Camas. I'm in a minority in this room. I've seen the Sierra Club operate over 45, 50 years. I went to a meeting the other night, and I attended it. Everything's fear, anxiety, but the bad things are going to happen. They talk about the gorge, they talk about mine, and when they talk about Columbia River. Hey, I love those things as much as you do, but they've been doing this for 50 years, and they've been very successful. And they've been lying and cheating and deceiving and threatening people and scaring their wits out of them. Now, I'll give you an example. I've got six kids. When my kids were young, they were terrified because they thought California was falling in the ocean, Sierra Club, Coastal Commission. Not allowed to build on the coast for two years because it's going to wreck the environment, including Malibu, which is the highest paid tax revenue of any residential real estate in California right now. My kids went to college, came back, out of college. They told me, "Dad, get out of the building business, get out of the developing business." And I says, "Why?" There's a kid that goes to UC Davis, which is saturated with the Sierra Club guys. These people have done more damage to our country than anybody that I can think of. And let me tell my kids, "Dad, get out of the business because there's no more land." You know what you need to be successful? You need growth. Port of Camas, Washougal, just spent $43,000 for a comprehensive strategic plan. I've been here for 10 years, and I see opportunities like I've never seen before, and people in this community are stopping it from happening. The CRE DC just spent $100,000 for another study. The bottom line of both of those studies was growth. I saw that 10 years ago. I came here to the city, I came here to the city of Washougal, I talked to a planning director on this six-bedroom property you're talking about about two and a half years ago. If you would have accepted my deal, if the port would have accepted my deal, I would have brought in $474 million on this property in this community. Now, not only is it what I could have done, I could have sold a two-bedroom condo, affordable condo, to your kids to go to school in this community for $1,500 down, 6% interest, 30-year financing with no government subsidies. So, what happens in return? You go to Camas, they built 51 units there. It's 200% over and above fair market value. They call it affordable rent. They rent about 10 units for subsidized rents. The other rent is $1,030 for two bedrooms. Right around the corner, you can rent a two-bedroom for $735. It's all government subsidies. Some guy in Washington DC on Wall Street makes $30 million. He gets a low-income housing tax credit. HUD charges a whole bunch of money.
Joe, I need you to wrap up-
The city of Camas collected $850,000 for a building permit. That's $16,000 a unit. That's $80 a month when you figure a 6% loan. Anyhow, I'm not against the people here. Anyhow, I like clean air, I like clean water, I like the environment, but don't stop the growth, please. You've just got $100,000 on that. Anyhow, there's a lot of other things I can say. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else wish to address council? Last chance for this evening. Not last chance, but just for this evening. Okay. Going to council, and just so the public's aware, we are in a workshop, so there's no decisions that'll be made this evening after we get done with all of this. That'll come back to us next week at council meeting. Council, questions, comments? Joyce?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming and sharing your opinions on this very important consideration for us. Thank you.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you and the staff for the wonderful job you've done on this resolution. I had some concerns about some of the early drafts, but this is terrific. Dave, I hope you'll pass that along to the staff for me. Great job. One of the things that I'm looking for out of this, I noticed that in the resolution here, it says that we're looking at the potential impacts from coal dust and other particulates that may be blown from open rail cars, and we're looking to the EIS to document that. I think that's a great approach. Somebody needs to document that. What I'm looking for the EIS to do personally, so I can make a good decision on this, is to establish the evidence, and I'm looking for two things. I'm looking for evidence that says we've got significant amounts of coal dust being deposited here, and secondly, actually, three things. I'm looking for BNSF mitigation. I want to know whether it's effective. And the third thing is, I'd like to know what health problems we can document that come from the coal, because that's an important part of the decision. And this is the evidence that I'm looking for to base a decision on, and I hope the EIS will develop that for us. And when I say evidence, I'm looking for studies that have documented these things. I'm looking for facts, I'm looking for proof. I'm not looking for opinion. And based on this, I think we can make a good decision. And by the way, I share your concerns. I'm not sure at this point how valid they are because I haven't seen any evidence, but I do share your concerns. I've lived around the country and around the world, and I've lived in some pretty polluted places, including 12 years in Sacramento, California. And when I came there, Sacramento was the 10th most polluted city in the nation. And when I left there 12 years later, it was the 5th most polluted city in the nation. So, that's what happens when you don't take care of your environment. And I'd like to see us do that, but I want to base it on the facts, on the evidence. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You bet. Dave, what was your first item? I got the other two down. What was the first item? Significant amounts of coal dust are being deposited here. I'd like to see the evidence on that. And my concern there is, we've had 100 years of coal trains, and I haven't been able to detect yet the evidence of the coal dust, and that it's a problem. So, that's what I'm looking for. Paul?
I also would like to thank all of you for coming. It's, when I was first on council, we would have meeting after meeting where no one showed up, and so you were kind of operating in a vacuum. You made the best decision that you can, but it's nice to be able to hear from people. And just another quick comment, I spent not quite two years in Pennsylvania, 30 miles east of Pittsburgh. Now, when I was there, a lot of it was the steel mills. When they opened the blast furnaces in McKeesport, it lit up the sky 30 miles away. Not enough to read, but close. And so, I'm somewhat aware of, and especially of, some of the issues in eastern Pennsylvania around Scranton and some of the, frankly, devastation that has existed there. So, thank you all for coming.
Other comments, questions in regards to the resolution?
Yeah. Yes. The EIS, what agency would be responsible for the statement?
In Watcom County, they've entered into a memorandum of understanding where the local government, which would be the lead agency on the SEPA, and the Department of Ecology that has some oversight in that, would be partnering on the SEPA side, but then they're wrapping in the Army Corps of Engineers, which would be the lead on the NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act review. So, the three of them together have agreed to jointly promulgate the EIS. The ultimate land use decision in Watcom County would be made by Watcom County, and then upon appeal, it could go a myriad of different directions, and there may be a variety of permits that are necessary, some of which would have state oversight if there's a shorelines permit, which I would imagine there would be a shorelines review required. In Cowitz County, the situation is, the landscape is basically the same, but there does not exist a memorandum of understanding. So, there is no decision to be made by the city of Washougal with respect to the rail terminal projects. We don't have a decision to make. We can advocate, we can ask for information, we can want to understand, we can try to talk to our partners at the BNSF and seek as much mitigation as we can, no matter what's coming down the track, coal or otherwise, you know? I think it's just prudent for us to assume that, as the economic engine roars, that growth will mean additional traffic on that line. These are just two examples that are right in front of us, so we can try to be involved.
I think that's important to remember in this. We were trying to walk a fine line, and I think David did an excellent job. You know, one of the, I doubt you will ever see me advocate against commerce, some extreme things maybe, but in this case, we certainly are not trying to derail the railroad or anything like that, no pun intended. We're all for commerce, we're all for jobs, specifically in Washougal, but if there are other places in the country, that is a wonderful thing. We just want to make sure that what's moving through is safe and that we have reasonable reassurances that it's safe, and that's really why we crafted it the way we did. Yet additional questions?
No, I think pretty much everything was addressed. I agree with the consensus that it was pretty well crafted. I would definitely like to take a look at Camas's resolution. If I could get a copy of that emailed, that would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything further? There is one minor change to the resolution that I didn't catch until earlier. I meant to mention it earlier. On the very last section, Section 4, Effective Dates, I would, next week, the resolution that you'll see in your pack will actually have the dates of March 19th as effective dates if the resolution moves forward. I believe there is a pre-scoping hearing and meeting the following day, the 20th, up in Bellingham, so if you're predisposed to approving this next week, we'll try and make sure that they've got that information up there as they even go into those early meetings. Okay. That takes us to the presentation discussion item. Connie Jo, CTRAN ballot measure regarding sales tax increases for operations and maintenance of high-capacity transit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. Welcome.
I'm going to change hats now, huh? I have to say that I feel like I've been helicoptered into a war zone, but I'm really enjoying the education, the exposure, and I thank you for your trust in appointing me to the CTRAN board. Since December, since I was being considered, I began attending their meetings, and I was encouraged by Mr. Scott to explain to you how I've gathered some information, and you'll see on my Page 1, it talks about, I've interviewed Jeff Hamm, he's the CEO of CTRAN, the executive director, Scott Patterson, the CTRAN Director of Development and Public Affairs. I've had an orientation where I had the pleasure of visiting the entire facility in Vancouver, which was a blast because I'm a school bus driver. And so, from bus driver to bus drivers, we had a great time, really enjoyed meeting the people that run the organization, great people. And went to their annual retreat. I've been to board meetings, like I said, since December, studied their minutes, their 20- and 50-year plan. My husband and I were invited and thoroughly enjoyed a tour. We literally got on the BNSF, went across to Portland, got on a light rail, took a bus. We've seen where the CRC project is being proposed, and we've got to see right up close and personal the impact it's going to have on the community, both good and bad. And lots of newspaper articles, I have already this many stacked, this deep of articles that I've reviewed. So, why am I here tonight? This paragraph says it. It's like a major run-on sentence, but this, two sentences, but this says exactly what is at question. "I'm here tonight to give Washougal the opportunity to voice their wishes to the Board of Directors of CTRAN concerning a vote on a proposed sales tax increase of .1% to fund high-capacity transit. This high-capacity transit project includes, one, operations and maintenance costs only for CRC light rail transit from Expo Center in Portland to Clark College in Vancouver, and, two, the local share capital costs and operations and maintenance costs for the proposed fourth-plane bus rapid transit project on the November 2012 ballot." This light rail issue, a little bit of background here on HCT. I have to laugh because I was always asking everyone, would you define what that shortcut that those initials stand for? And now I'm just as guilty as the rest of you. But HCT, the background, light rail was voted on in 1995, Measure 1, and it was defeated sorely, 67 to 32, in opposition of it, partly because that was a .3 increase on sales tax and a .3 in excise tax, so that was really a scary situation. In 2008, the Board of Director of CTRAN adopted through Resolution BR 08015, the locally-preferred alternative of the Columbia River Crossing. There's some things that I just wanted to point out that that resolution addressed as far as guidance to CRC and the finances. Number one was a replacement bridge. Items 2 and 3 were the mode of the capacity of the transit, which was light rail from Expo to Clark College. Page 3 has a number 3 also, and it's about capital financing of HCT component of the CRC project, that it will not ask voters for capital construction dollars. And number four, "Any means chosen to finance operations of the HCT component of the CRC project shall be submitted to impacted CTRAN voters for approval." So, that bullet point, number four, is the whole purpose of this discussion. Says Page 2, "So, financing for the capital to build the bridge and light rail will come from, one, the federal transit at-" from, one, the Federal Transit Administration New Starts Program, from tolling, from the tolling of Oregon and Washington for the structures and the interchanges, discretionary revenues from the federal government, and discretionary revenues from Oregon and Washington. The piece that we're addressing tonight is the ongoing cost of operations and maintenance of HCT and capital costs of operation and maintenance of BRT on fourth plane. Currently, operations and maintenance of HCT is estimated to be two-point-five million to three million dollars annually, which could be realized through a point-one percent sales tax of the C-TRAN district. O and M is something that will always need funding, and these costs will always continue to climb in future years. So, how will this HCT, O and M, fourth-plane BRT be paid for? Well, this is the question before the cities. C-TRAN board has asked all seven cities, Vancouver, Camas, Waschugle, La Centre, Ridgefield, Battleground, and Yakult, to weigh in on two options. Option one is that we would have a full C-TRAN district-wide vote to increase sales tax point-one percent. Option two is that the cities can decide to create a sub-district and allow only the sub-district to vote to increase sales tax within the boundary. The smaller the district, the higher the sales tax increase would be within the district boundary. And this district, the sub-district can be created in any fashion, there is no regulation about that. It could be Vancouver and all of the urban growth area, it could be Vancouver city limits only, it could be downtown Vancouver district only, it could be as wide as, as that first one mentioned, it could be as small as just a little tiny downtown area. C-TRAN's twenty-year plan originally assumed that there would be a full district vote, but two years ago, there was an amendment to the RCW-81104, which allowed for a sub-district to be created if desired. And again, that's all up to the people within the C-TRAN district that can make that decision. So, what would it mean if Camas and Waschugle were part of the full HCT vote and it passes? That would mean that there will be an increase of point-one percent citywide in each city that participated. What would it mean if Camas, Waschugle were not to be part of the HCT vote? Well, if HCT vote were to pass and Camas, Waschugle were not part of the C-TRAN district boundary, the extra point-one percent sales tax would not be assessed within the city limits of Camas and Waschugle. So, the question is to the council, do we want to be part of a full district vote recognizing that if it passes, we will be paying more in sales tax within our city limits, as opposed to if we do not join in the vote due to the creation of a sub-district and it passes, we will not pay more in sales tax within our city limits? We do have some pressing deadlines in order to get this ballot measure on the November ballot. C-TRAN's asking that we have this decision to them by the April meeting, because C-TRAN has to act with the resolution by the July meeting, and an expert review panel has to have a final report in September. So, there's some very hard deadlines that we're up against. So, the action requested by Camas and Waschugle councils is simply a head nod to assume for purposes of the finance plan, the full district vote or a sub-district vote. That's a whole lot of stuff, all in one presentation, and of course, questions. If I don't have your question, if I don't have your answer for the question tonight, I certainly do plan to do the homework and get back to you immediately via email, because I know we want to act on this by next week in order to get back to them.
I'm not sure I ever knew. I certainly saw Mr. Hamm's presentation on the fourth-plane corridor. Do you have any sense of what the capital cost of that is being talked about? I mean, close enough for hand grenades, big round number?
No.
So, this, this would finance capital cost for the fourth-plane corridor, but no capital cost for CRC?
Correct.
Do you have any sense at all of what percentage of the operation and maintenance is associated with the fourth-plane corridor as opposed to light rail?
No.
Those are things that I'm kind of curious about, although...
To Mr. Hamm.
I have to admit that, for me personally, I think that the bus rapid transit is a good idea. On the other hand, I'm a little pressed in terms of trying to find a benefit for Waschugle. It's true that the ninety-two goes to Fisher's Landing, and then Fisher's Landing would then connect with that corridor, but it's not clear that there are not more efficient routes for that. The only time I've ever gone to Fisher's Landing, I've gone across the bridge to catch light rail at Rose Park to go in to downtown Portland. I don't think I've ever been to Fisher's Landing for any other purpose. But I'm just curious, what, what percentage of what we're talking about is really the fourth-plane corridor, which is considerably longer, and if I remember right, considerably more expensive than... But since that presentation, I hear that the plan has changed quite a bit. The initial plan was that there would be purpose-built bus lanes down the center of fourth plane, all the way from, for all intents and purposes, I-5, although it wasn't really there, all the way out to the Vancouver, Wallisfield. But my understanding now is that they, they don't think that they want to build those purpose-built lanes, that they wanted to do something else. So, I'm, I just don't know what, what's being talked about here.
Yeah, presentation was done, showed all of the different options, but it's, it's in discussion.
Yeah, okay. I can see that there might be some marginal advantage to Waschugle for the, on the fourth-plane But there's a, there's a part of me that's so squeak, so cheap that I squeak when I walk, and if, if they go with a small district that had to increase the sales tax as much as three-tenths of a percent, again, it's a marginal boost for us, but I think it creates a little bit of retail economic advantage for us out here in Waschugle and in Camas. And of course, for, for North County also, but North County, especially Battleground, they already have major shopping out there. They don't, if you want to go to Fred Meyer, you don't leave Battleground. And if you live in La Centre, you probably don't go to Salmon Creek, you probably go over to Battleground. So, their situation is somewhat different, but for us, I, I'm just hard-pressed to see any great advantage for us in having, in having us vote on that. My sense is that our advantage is to have that higher-tax district somewhere else.
The only thing is that we were so close to that district, if they were to do it within the city limits of Vancouver, we realized that that's 192nd. I mean, I shop, I shop there all the time.
Yeah, but the resolution also says the impacted area, and yes, you could make an argument that it's the city of Vancouver, you certainly can't make an argument that it's only downtown Vancouver, because we're talking about the fourth-plane corridor. And also, you mentioned in passing this expert panel. Turns out, that's a very high hurdle to get through that panel before you can have your vote.
That is in process, they've been appointed by...
Right, and they're all, most of the ones that I remember seeing are actually professionals from outside of our area who do not have a local axe to grind. So, that, they, they have to, I forget what all they have to rule on, but the economic viability, is this enough money to do the O and M? Does it, does it meet the transportation needs? All kinds of technical issues like that, that, that they will have to decide. But my own tendency, I mean, if somebody wants to make a cogent argument in the other direction, that's fine, and I would listen very carefully, but my own tendency would be to say that we would just as soon not be part of that vote.
From your discussions with people and the information you've gathered, how do you feel this would affect Waschugle, and what will we get out of it? Will our transportation be better here?
Not in the, not in the near future, often the distant future, but...
Because we're at the end of the line, literally.
We're at the end of the line, yes, yes.
And we do not have good service.
Yes, this does not impact our service as far as bus. This is strictly talking about from Portland to Clark College and fourth plane. Only thing I'm hearing is when I, when I speak about it, to constituents, to neighbors and friends, no matter where they live, I, because all of the seven cities are represented, I've never heard one person say, "I don't want to vote." Seems that every person wants a vote, they want to say in the matter. And so, when I presented this to Camas last week, they, they pretty much felt the same thing that the people that they had spoken to. You know, it's like Paul said, you know, well, it could cost us, to get a vote could cost us point-one percent, but to not get a voice in the matter, when it's going to impact us every time we leave our town to do anything, it will impact us, because we're such a small little section. That's why so many people feel strongly, very strongly, that they want a voice in the matter. So, that's really the question tonight, is do we want a voice? Do we want to withhold our opinions?
True words are never spoken. It says here, "Operations and maintenance is something that will always need funding, and these costs will always continue to climb in future years." Yea, verily. As an example, did we not just approve a two-percent increase in C-TRAN taxes, sales tax, to be effective on the first of April?
Yes. No, point-two. Sorry, I didn't catch that.
Point-two percent. Did I get that wrong?
Point-two. Yes, we voted that in November, it takes effect April first.
Thank you. Now, the question I've got is, how much more can we afford to increase our sales tax without adversely affecting our ability to attract new residents and businesses? I would like to see a district-wide vote, and my, my reason for this is very simple. I've watched and researched light rail projects and other types of high-capacity transit projects throughout the country. I watched BART being built down in the San Francisco Bay Area. I watched the neighborhood group in Oakland sue BART successfully for taking away the bus money and put it into light rail. Whenever you get into light rail and high-capacity transit, especially light rail, you wind up with corruption, nasty politics, funding problems, because although the capital, initial capital funding is provided fifty percent by the feds and fifty percent by the local match, usually the state, the replacement capital funding is not. And so, the C-TRAN district would have to do that. Now, they've got some reserves, but if you get a light rail in here, thirty years down the road, when it has to be, everything has to be replaced, the rolling stock, the facilities, all this, the rails, all of this type of stuff has to be replaced, it has a thirty-year lifespan. And if you haven't set the money aside, do you really think that in thirty years, the federal government is going to be able to provide grants and funding to replace your light rail? If you do, you have more confidence than I do in the federal government, because I don't think the Chinese are going to be lending it to us at that point. We're already borrowing forty-three cents on a dollar for the money we're spending now. So, I would like to see a district-wide vote on this thing, really for two reasons. One is so that the sub-district can't approve it and, and get it in, get the tax increase in. And the other one is so that they can't turn around, C-TRAN can't turn around later and find a way, and they always find a way, to have it expanded from the C-TRAN minor sub-district into the district-wide C-TRAN taxpaying base. And that, my friends and neighbors, is us. And I don't see the value to this for Waschugle. In fact, I'm not sure I see the value of, of this for the city of Vancouver and for the county of Clark. So, I would like to see a district-wide vote.
Thank you.
Two clarifications on that. One, in, I believe in what's being proposed now under the CRC, the federal government, the assumption is that the federal government is paying all the capital costs of the light rail, correct?
Oh, yeah.
But they're looking a hundred percent of it.
Right.
But they're looking for the local jurisdiction to then figure out how to operate it.
Mm-hmm.
But they'll build it. And second, if, if it is a sub-district, if it comes down to it and it is approved as a sub-district, the tax increase only happens in that sub-district itself.
For now.
Yeah, there's...
Look throughout the nation and see how that's been...
Well, but I think it's an unfortunate mistake to reason about what happens in Washington on the basis of what happened in California.
I'm not looking at California.
It is California, it's not Washington.
I'm looking at the nation, why? They get their nose under the tent, and eventually...
Even, yeah, even, even short of that, one of my, well, I think it was a concern in the fall of some council members, regardless where it, regardless where any of it may go in, in regards to funding sub-district or not, is the question of what happens if there are shortfalls in the system. Even though we don't have the tax increase, we're not paying towards it, then our additional dollars being pulled out of C-TRAN's reserve amounts for the, for the base service itself in order to shore that up. And I think that runs along the same line as yours, is we don't have an answer to, can we make sure that that's bulletproof so that that doesn't happen if it's truly going to stay on the west side?
In addition, the first funding source they turned to was the state. Bail us out. Where does the state get its money? Partially, it gets it from Waschugle.
Yeah.
So, it's just, it's a needless boondoggle, as far as I'm concerned. And I'd be happy to debate anybody on that subject.
I don't understand this sentence, "The smaller the district, the higher the sales tax increase would be within the district boundary." What does that mean?
If it's county-wide, or it's not really county-wide, but it would be the seven cities and the urban growth area, which would be, that's like Salmon Creek and, and all of those areas that are unincorporated, but they're all part of the urban growth. So, that, that two-point-five million or three million at, as of this year, that's required, would come from that entire district. So, it would only need to be approximately one, point-one percent, almost dead it again. So, every time you shrink that district down, say just to the city of Vancouver, it would be point-two percent. But now, if it was just a downtown area, because it's really impacting the downtown, and say the rest of the county didn't want to have anything to do with it, they didn't even want to voice in the matter, they are the only ones going to vote on it, well, they're going to end up, as David mentioned, could be as high as... going to end up, as, as David mentioned, could be as high as 0.3 percent if you're shopping downtown, any, any sales tax whatsoever in that downtown district. So the smaller the district, the higher the tax increase will be. Because they have to cover 2.5 to 3 million dollars annually to pay for operations and maintenance for these two projects. And again, those things, you got to realize, they're not ever going to decrease, they're always going to increase. So once we get into this, it's something we will, feeding a monster, you're always going to have to continue to feed it and, and maintain it as it, as it, what's that D-word?
Deteriorates.
Deteriorates, yes.
Depreciate.
Depreciates was the word I was looking for.
I'd like to agree with Council, Councilmember Greenlee, and that is that we do have an advantage here with low sales tax compared to Vancouver.
Could, it could become a selling point.
I haven't seen that be a major draw yet, but hey, I think we're headed that direction. And I'd certainly like to maintain that relative advantage.
It, it is kind of ironic, is it not, that the county rightfully allowed the, the construction of Vancouver Mall, and all of a sudden shops started leaving downtown Vancouver. Now, when you see the bus rapid transit that's going to go from downtown Vancouver out to the mall, they're just going to encourage people to go that direction faster to spend their money. I'm not sure.
Oh, you're such a cynic.
Just, history repeats itself, it's an amazing thing about history.
Yeah.
Other, other questions? Kind of Joe, what about the, the veto block that both Vancouver and the county has? How, how is that potentially going to play out in this thing? What is, I understand what it means, but I don't understand what it means in regards to this. Well, no, the county in Vancouver, those are the two players, the rest of us are just going to sit by and watch the fight. But if Vancouver decides, what, what does their veto do for them? How does it come into play in their advantage in, in this question itself? I mean, can they just unilaterally say, "We're going to handle it, you, all the rest of you go away"?
Interesting that Mayor Levitt made a, a statement, Ron Stack made a statement to the newspaper that, you know what, maybe we don't need a vote after all, you know...
Find funding in other ways.
Find, fund it in other ways. But, I'm trying to find my paper here, I know I, I attached it so that I would have it just for this moment. But Jeff Hamm, the CEO, Director of C-Trans, immediately started getting phone calls, saying, "What?". And his response was, "Oh, no, we are not, we are sticking with the resolution. The resolution states that we will have a vote." So he's not going to, he, he just reiterated to Mayor Levitt that that isn't going to happen. We're going to allow the people to vote, we're going to let the people make the decision. So there isn't going to be another way of, of deciding that, except through a vote of the people.
I've, I've just been confused in the last couple of weeks with the discussions about the, the blocking power that both the county and Vancouver has, how that, what that even does to this issue.
Yeah, this needs to be, that needs to be addressed, seriously. And that, that can be addressed some, in some ways, possibly by changing the way the board is made up, instead of three for Vancouver, three for the counties. But do things like, Camas is much larger now, maybe they need a seat of their own. Ways of breaking that block, but that's something that, and I'm not sure how that's addressed, that's something that we're going to be talking about. Yeah. But this is the comment that was made that says that C-Trans focus remains, this is addressing Mayor Levitt's comment in the, in the Columbian that day. "C-Trans focus remains on meeting the requirements of the state's High Capacity Transit Act, RCW 81104, in order to allow for a ballot measure as soon as this November to fund the operations and maintenance costs only for CRC light rail transit and the local share capital costs and operations and maintenance for the proposed Fourth Plain Bus Rapid Transit project." "We will have a vote," he said, because that's how the board, through that resolution in 2008, decided to do it. So they're not going to undo it.
If Vancouver decides that they want to try and undo that, the county can block them with their veto as well of not undoing it.
Yeah.
I just have a comment, because part of, of this proposed sales tax is very politically charged versus another part that doesn't seem to be as politically charged, which is the BRT part. I, I find it interesting that they would be willing to put both the LRT and the BRT on the same ballot measure with the 0.1 percent proposed sales tax. And I, I don't know when you need an answer.
Well, it seems to me, just, again, being a newbie, it's sort of, my head swims, but this is our opportunity to address light rail. Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Yeah, but the BRT would die with it.
And then once, but once, we have that other opportunity to revisit that as a separate program. So this is a chance, for those that don't agree that light rail, that, that Clark County is ready for light rail, not saying that we would never be, but are we ready now? This could be an opportunity to, to voice either for light rail or against light rail, and then revisit BRT on Fourth Plain. Because that certainly is a viable option for our county at this phase. Lots of traffic on that bus route for going to and from work, a lot of riders. So it's, it seems to make sense to improve that.
Isn't some of the funding for the bridge dependent on having light rail? Do I understand that correctly?
That is conjecture and rumor, that is not fact.
I don't, I don't, my understanding is that the federal government has never said, unless you put light rail on there, we will not give you any funding at all.
That is a political...
That came from Oregon, didn't it?
Fear, yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a political fear tactic.
Okay.
Just Jennifer... My, my understanding is that they actually, at this point, can't separate them under RCW, that they have to go with both. And just to summarize, if I am, if I am completely self-interested about Waschuggal, I think the best outcome for us is a, is that we're not part of the tax district and Vancouver is. And 3/10 of a percent is maybe not enough to change where you buy your ibuprofen, but it may be enough to change where you buy your refrigerator. And there is a Sears outlet now in Camas. And under the unit, the new sales tax rules, if that refrigerator is delivered to a Waschuggal address, we get the sales tax. On the other hand, if we go, if we take our pickup truck and go to Vancouver Mall and buy it at the Sears store there and load it in the truck ourselves and bring it home, Vancouver gets that tax.
So where it's delivered, I mean, if it's delivered, is that what you said?
It's, it's what's called destination-based tax. Now, that hurt us when that happened, because it used to be that we got the sales tax from Wesley Ford. All of that vehicle tax used to come to us because they're in Waschuggal. But with the destination-based tax, if the car is, if the new car is registered in Skamania County, then Skamania County gets that sales tax, we don't. So it, it's, it's clearly, it's not the difference between going across the river and not to buy your refrigerator, but if you buy it at the Sears store and Sears delivers it over here, they have to pay Washington sales tax. Ask Sleep, what was it, Sleep, the mattress store that's now out of business. So for me, it just seems, if I'm, if I'm completely self-interested, the best possible result is that we're not part of the vote, and the vote passes in central Vancouver.
Other feedback, other questions?
Just to wrap up, talk to people. We, we do have until April meeting, which is the first, or no, excuse me, the second Tuesday in April. Email me what you think. How are, are we going to, to a vote on this next week? Is that, is that what we discussed?
I think that's up to the pleasure of the council. I hadn't been planning to, to bring an item for action on this, the agenda specifically. As you'll recall, council, Councilwoman Freeman, as the representative for both communities, has the ability to vote on any matter before the C-Trans board in the, in the, in the way that she feels is appropriate. She is obligated at, on matters of significance, as you know, to consult with all of you, of course, and then also with Camas, which she's done. And I believe you perceive that you received some consensus direction, they didn't take an action because it was at a workshop, but some consensus direction around a district-wide vote was the preference that they seem to have. It's up to this council how you would like to inform your representative of, if, if there is a consensus, and that can be as formal as an action, and that would be manifested by a resolution, or it could be as informal as the conversation that you just had, and Councilwoman, you would, you know, take your judgment from that. As you said, there's other meetings, it can come up at council communications, so it's kind of up to the pleasure of the council. I had thought the more informal approach might be the way to go.
I'm good with that.
But it's kind of what you would like, and...
No, I'm, I'm really good with a head nod. I wasn't sure what, I was looking to you to say what, what is required.
Right. No action can be taken tonight, it's, there, there is no action, but it is common for councils to, you know, kind of go round robin and express opinion, and often you can see consensus, but it's not an action. You haven't heard from everyone, a formal meeting with a resolution can, can provide you a very formal direction, but then that puts the position where, you know, you're going to vote, and, you know, I'm not sure what the resolution would say. So I, I, I would think that the informal approach might be the way to go. I would just caution the council on communicating about it via email, where, those things that we talked about, where I think inadvertently, no one intending to do it, inadvertently, a meeting would begin to take place, or a serial meeting of some kind, which is why having it in this kind of a setting, as we discussed in those meetings, you know, you have the occasion to have conversations with your colleagues, just be mindful of, of the potential for a serial meeting to develop.
So if they were all to email me their opinions, that would be a serial meeting?
That would be a no-no.
Yes, correct.
A no-no, so we need to accomplish this here tonight, possibly?
Right.
Or next Monday during a council meeting next week.
Yeah. You could do it during council communication.
Still an informal...
Right. And, and actually, your rules provide for, and Roberts would allow for the council, for a member of the council to make a motion during a regular meeting at any time, including during council comments, a motion of the nature, you know, "I move that we advise our representative to vote in a particular way." If you think that that is the level of advisement necessary for your representative, it can be as informal as this conversation.
Final comments? Okay. Close to what you need?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Public comments, we're at that final stage of the evening, our third one for this evening, for any members of the public that wish to address council. Okay. I have, under mayor's update, I have really one item for you, and this is kind of a heads-up. I believe Vancouver actually is receiving information at their meeting earlier, or this evening, and then have a proclamation that hopefully all the mayors will be doing next week. This is in regards to Pink Lemonade, otherwise known as the Pink Lemonade Project, put on by a local Vancouver-based charity, pinklemonadeproject.org. Basically, this is Waste Connections, as you know, handles our garbage and recycling pickups now, pretty much throughout most of the county, other than the city of Camas. And they are going in with this organization to do a project that they call Brave Day, Breast Reconstruction Advocacy Victory Event. Waste Connections, at their cost, are creating, they're going to do this on an annual basis, depending on how it takes off, and I'm sure that they're going to be doing this for quite some time. They are creating pink recycle containers to take the place of the blue recycled containers that most all of us have now. They are making them available, 200 of them, at a cost of $200 per cart, of which all $200 Waste Connections will donate towards this, this Pink Lemonade Project for breast cancer awareness and research. So you are so warned, before this comes out, should you wish one of those carts, it will cost you 200, all of that will go towards the, the nonprofit efforts on behalf of them. But should you want those, certainly let me know, and I will let the appropriate people at Waste Connections know that as well in advance. We've already, we've, we've already put in our advance order for one, but they're only going to do 200 a year, countywide. So if you wish, there you go, you could be the only person on your block that has a bright pink one. But it also comes with instructions that you've got to keep it clean, you've got to do all kinds of things, so. Items for, David, any items that we didn't address already?
Yes, just briefly, I have some good news to, to share with the council. As you'll recall, we had two CDBG grants, or applications for CDBG grants for some sidewalks on 32nd and Addy, and also for ADA improvements to our city hall, and I'm pleased to inform you that we were successful with both of those grants. And I'd really like to commend the teams, not here, but Jim and Rob, for their efforts on that, and then with Wallace Engineering as well, helping us out, and Joseph, our building official, helped us out, so really a good team effort. We ceded a lot, a lot of compliments on the quality of the application. And I would like to let you know as well that your action to leverage some resources here out of our general fund to be matching dollars is probably really what made the application successful. We received, we had the highest match of all the applicants, and the points that you get for that, we received the highest out of all of the applicants. So you identified your priorities and you put resources to your priorities, and that vision paid off for you, so thank you for that. Also successful in this round is Affordable Community Environments, who operates, owns and operates the facility, and I just froze on what it's called. I know what it used to be called, but on Addy...
Columbia Gardens?
Is that what it's called? A nice project where they rehabbed, and they come in and they do more than just physical upgrades, they, they bring a program in and they are really advocates for their residents, and they, they have a great program. They are going to, if they can pull everything else together, and this little piece of CDBG money is just one little piece of it, there's a 40 or so unit townhouse, apartment townhouse project in town that they've identified for acquisition to rehab, it dates from the 70s, they would completely rehab the facility, multimillion-dollar project, and bring their program there. And it's a real enhancement to the community when they do that. So if they're able to cobble everything together, they are getting some funds from this round as well. So three projects in Waschuggal, which is, it's outstanding news for us. I forget exactly where they're at.
I believe it's on H Street, where we had the, the property where we had the fatal fire late last year.
It's over in that area, on H. Yeah, I could get that detailed information. I mean, they have a big application that they, they put in, but they do, they do a really good job.
That is outstanding work on behalf of the staff, that is tremendous.
So we're going to get going right away, right after the meeting, the, the staff... Right after the meeting, the staff there said, can you get started as soon as possible on the sidewalk project specifically, including potentially spending some of the money we identified as a match toward some of the preliminary things you do on a project while we wait for the grant agreement, which would be in the summertime. And I told them that we are committed to the project, and I don't, I didn't think that that would be a problem for the council, but certainly it'd be your decision to turn us loose, if you would, as a team, on the project before we had ink on the agreement, but I have absolute confidence that, you know, that's what's going to happen. So, look for that soon, and we'll get going on the project here, too, as soon as we can.
I did hear from a couple of the other mayors that got one, one and three-quarters projects approved, that type of stuff, and they're the ones that are putting the pressure on, because they're anticipating that those bids are going to come in. The sooner we get them done, the bids are going to come in lower, not just for ourselves, for Camas, for everybody else, and their one and a third project will become two projects, and there'll be some money left over, so.
Right. I think I made a commitment to everybody there, and there were some folks who were below the line, the community organizations that weren't receiving funding. It's very difficult. There's much need and not enough funds. Made the commitment that we'll do everything we can to be as efficient as we possibly can. There's contingencies and overhead that we put into these estimates, and if we can put anything back, we'll do that. And the pot that was available this cycle included a fairly good chunk of money that was put back because of that same reason. So, we'll see how that goes, and if we can help others out with that. Camas was successful as well, and it'll be good for Waschugul residents, too. At Louis Block Park, they have a portable restroom there. The baseball club has a restroom facility, but that's private. So, the portable public restroom facility will be replaced with a new permanent restroom facility, which will be an enhancement for a popular park there at Louis Block. So, that was good news in Camas as well.
Good. Congratulations to the team. Items from council?
Couple of things. Quick question, Dave. How are we doing on the launch ramp at Lower Hathaway?
I haven't gotten a status update on that very recently, so let me find out for you. I'll send out an email.
And it was on the agenda at Parksport, or at least on the list of the funding and whatnot.
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just, I admit it's a personal interest, I use that ramp, so.
My recollection is that August is our in-water work.
Right.
We have already completed Kentucky with Suzanne, a third of the planning, the permit process, that type of stuff that we also paid for ourselves with the RCO grant left to come in, but I believe that they, she's getting ready to move towards bids, I believe.
I'll confirm that, but-
Final engineering costs came through payables this week, so I was, I was just curious how far along we're-
And we are getting close to bids. If we've, that means we paid for final engineering, or at least a portion of it, if they invoiced us over more than one billable period, but I'll get, I'll ask Suzanne to just email out a brief project summary that gives timelines, and she can email out to the council.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it. Along with that, I wanted to kind of underline the good news about Vancouver Clinic, which opened, the mayor cut the ribbon over there last Wednesday, was it?
Monday.
That's right, last Monday. And I met a bunch of people over there, the chairman of the board, and the CEO, and a number of the executive staff, they're really excited about being out here. They really like the idea of being out here in Waschugul and Camas. So, that's exciting. I don't know if everybody heard the good news about the brew pub that's going into the old pawn shop over on Main Street. That's great news. We should, I'm sure that Adam, whose last name now eludes me, I'm sorry?
Taylor.
Adam, thank you. Adam Taylor, who is the Development Director for Lone Wolf Development, I'm sure has been working very hard on this for a very long time. And I had some conversations with him when he first started, that the problem for downtown is one of critical mass. You need office jobs to get restaurants, you need restaurants to get office jobs, which you need to get little shops, little retail. And so, to get the incubator building on its way to completion, and their first tenant signed there, and then the new brew pub, that's all moving along very well, and I'm excited about that. The Sapphire Plant over in the port is moving along. There are other things that hopefully we'll be hearing about soon in economic development, so that's all very positive for the things that are happening here.
Other items from council?
Yeah. Just a quick comment here. I'm hearing rumors that the Waschugul Farmers Market might not happen this summer. The person who's the main organizer of the market, actually started her own small business in the accounting industry, and she doesn't have the time. If there are any other interested citizens, I have the Two Rivers Community Group email if anyone would like to have it, to maybe pick over, or, you know, just show an interest or volunteer or whatever. So, that was all I had.
There's no other items? We're adjourned. So, on the, there was one item that Samantha had from the coal trains that didn't make it this way, something that was signed by local businesspeople?
Oh, I have it. You know what? I'm holding it over here.
You've got that, I'm going to give it all to Rose, so that we've got it all in the record.
Okay, yeah, I do have that. I'm so sorry.
Yep.
I'm going to peek at it.